Hearing prior to our regular council meeting. Gina, would you please?
The mayor and council of the city of Lewisburg will hold a public meeting Tuesday, April the 8th, 2025 at 5:50 PM at Lewisburg City Hall, 131 East Church Street, following by the regular meeting at 6:00 PM. The public hearing will be to hear comments and opinions concerning the following. Number one, ordinance 25-04, ordinance amending section 20-604 of the fence ordinance to specify materials that can be used for fences in the front of the residence. Define the process for enforcement and punishment of co-violations pertaining to section 20-604 fence ordinance. Item number two, ordinance 25-05, ordinance which is an amendment number one pertaining to ordinance 24-10, original annual budget ordinance, and approving the budget amendments for fiscal year 2024 and 2025.
Okay, if anyone wishes to address the council on either of these items, please come to the stand and state your name and address, and you are limited to three minutes. If not, you may visit for the next eight minutes. They are provided for us by our state rep. What we have to do is call. Todd Warner will...
And it may already be a call in. I'll check with Brandon Patrick down at the shop because they keep up with the flags and raising them. I'll find out if not, we'll get one. It's a wonder they don't need them all over town, the way we've had wind and storms and they... And I've discovered they don't make flags like she does, or those things, to take a whipping in that weather. Yeah. But I'll check with them because they may already have requested if not, we'll forget.
To save a little time, at the conclusion of our meeting, we'll take the picture against the wall like we normally do. And first, we'll have the mayor and the council, and if the councilwomen would sit beside me and gentlemen behind, and then we'll ask the mayor, council, and the appointed Gina, Alan, Thomas, is that all?
City manager.
City manager. And then after that, the third one would be with the same group plus the department head, okay? At the normal place.
You say you put that over. I don't see it.
Yeah, later. I don't, it was first thing you put your portfolio on. It was on top of...
You talking about the dam?
Thomas?
They're talking about bringing up Columbia Dam again. Tommy said he put sheet over there.
Just a reminder, we're taking pictures afterward, conclusion of the meeting. What time is it?
I thought you were talking about the dam, dam. The dam.
No, no.
Okay, 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 all right.
We have about three minutes. Anybody have anybody we want to remember on our prayer list? How many total items do we have? Besides the minutes and...
We've got two, obviously, since I have...
So seven, besides the minutes.
I don't know. I know, I let him check. Put my name on it.
What's the time? Fifty-nine?
One minute.
It's 6:00 PM and time to start our regular meeting. Bam Hazelip is going to say our prayer this afternoon, followed by Councilwoman Thomas, who will lead us in the pledge.
As we prepare to go to the Lord, let us be mindful of the families of Tony Bradford, Martha McDaniel, the Tyler Newell family, and Gordon McKay. Let us pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for another blessed day. Father God, we know that through it all you are in control. We pray that your presence and your spirit be with us in this meeting tonight as we prepare to address the agendas for the city of Lewisburg. Father God, we thank you for blessing the city of Lewisburg, the citizens and the employees that keep this city going. Father God, we pray that you look down upon us, Father God, touch our hearts and touch our minds, that we may work together in collaboration to do what's in the best interest of this city as a whole, Father God. And we just pray that you continue to bring us together in a unified cause so we may do the will of the people of this city and do the will of the Lord himself. Father God, we thank you for your forgiveness, Father God. We thank you for not giving us what we deserve but giving us what we need. May your presence and your spirit guide us through this meeting and through every day of our lives. It's in the mighty name of your son, Jesus Christ, and your son and our Savior that we pray. Amen.
Thank you, ma'am.
Please face the flag and join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you both.
Whereas the mayor and council wishes to allow citizens of the city of Lewisburg to voice their opinions, concerns, or and comments, et cetera, and whereas the city, the Lewisburg City Council holds a regular monthly meeting the second Tuesday of each month, now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Lewisburg that citizens will be allowed to give their address and the council during the citizen input. The citizens' address, the council must abide by the following guidelines. Name and address to be given for record. Give subject matter of description. Understand there will be no voting. Three minutes maximum to speak. Address, address council, not the audience. No personal attacks, no religious comments, no more than three times on the same subject. Once the meeting is adjourned, we would like to ask everybody to exit the meeting in a properly and timely manner.
Thank you. Anyone wish to address the council? Please come forward, state your name and address. If not, ladies and gentlemen, you have the minutes before you. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
Councilwoman Thomas makes that motion. Is there a second?
I second.
Shannon seconded it. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Crutcher seconds. Is there discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Burns.
Aye.
Councilman Robertson.
Aye.
Councilman Crutcher.
Aye.
Councilman Michael.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Item two is approval of the financial statement. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Councilwoman Michael makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Thomas seconded that motion. Is there discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Burns.
Aye.
Councilman Robertson.
Aye.
Councilman Crutcher.
Aye.
Councilman Michael.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Item five, consider approval of second reading of ordinance 24-04, I mean, I'm sorry, 25-04, ordinance amending the section 20-604 of the fence ordinance to specify materials that can be used for fences in front of the residence. Define the process for enforcement and punishment of co-violations pertaining to section 20-604 fence ordinance.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Councilwoman Michael, seconded by Councilwoman Thomas. Is there discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Burns.
Aye.
Councilman Robertson, Robinson, sorry.
Aye.
Councilman Crutcher.
Aye.
Councilman Michael.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Number, item I, I'm sorry, item five, B, consider approval of second reading of ordinance 25-05, amendment number one to ordinance 24-10, and approving budget amendments for fiscal year 2024 and 2025.
Do I have a motion? Motion by Councilwoman Thomas, second.
I'll second.
Councilwoman Michael seconds the motion. Is there discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Burns.
Aye.
Councilman Robinson.
Aye.
Councilman Crutcher.
Aye.
Councilman Michael.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
New business, item six A, consider approval to appoint Todd Autry to the Industrial Development Board by the recommendation of Councilman Michael for council approval. This is a vacant seat of a member Ronald Robinson due to resignation, which term expires June 1st, 2029.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second.
Councilman Burns makes the motion. Councilman Robinson seconds that motion. Is there discussion?
Mr. Autry is here if anybody has any questions for him.
Yeah, please stand. Sir, but see it. Okay.
Welcome.
Further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Burns.
Aye.
Councilman Robinson.
Aye.
Councilman Crutcher.
Aye.
Councilman Michael.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Stand again, please. Thank you for be willing to serve.
Thank you.
Six B, consider approval of resolution 25-05 to make application for the Tennessee Department of Health Healthy Built Environment Grant in the amount of $80,000 with no match.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Councilman Robinson makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, okay. You're on the rep board, so you should...
Okay. Councilwoman Thomas seconds that motion. Is there discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Burns.
Aye.
Councilman Robinson.
Aye.
Councilman Crutcher.
Aye.
Councilman Michael.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Six C, consider approval of resolution 24-06 to make application for the Tennessee Department of Health Project Diabetes for grant is up to three years with funds not exceeding $150,000 a year and a maximum for a total of $450,000 with no match.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Thomas. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Michael. Is there discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Burns.
Aye.
Councilman Robinson.
Aye.
Councilman Crutcher.
Aye.
Councilman Michael.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Thank you.
Six D, consider approval of resolution 25-07 to make application for AARP grant in the amount of $20,000 with no match.
Do I have a motion? Motion by Councilwoman Thomas. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilman Robinson seconds the motion. Is there discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Burns.
Aye.
Councilman Robinson.
Aye.
Councilman Crutcher.
Aye.
Councilman Michael.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Thank you.
Six E, consider approval of resolution 24-08 to receive funds for the Spark Good Local Grant for our local Walmart in the amount of $4,000 with no match.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Councilwoman Thomas makes that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Michael seconds that motion. Is there discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Burns.
Aye.
Councilman Robinson.
Aye.
Councilman Crutcher.
Aye.
Councilman Michael.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Thank you.
Number seven, city manager's report.
Here's an opportunity for everybody to lend a hand to help keep our city beautiful. The city of Lewisburg, along with Marshall County Solid Waste, will have a cleanup event on May 3rd, 2025, beginning at 9:00 AM. City of Lewisburg, along with Marshall County Solid Waste, will be having a cleanup at Rock Creek Park. Any citizen that wants to volunteer can meet at City Hall on May 3rd at 9:00 AM. All supplies will be furnished. Lunch provided at 12:00 PM at Rock Creek Park for participants. Any questions, please call Stacy Martin, or Dave Hunter, or Cindy Frog. Please dress accordingly. We do this about twice a year.
That's the day of the Rotary Club Derby Party.
What time does that start? Because we'll have you out there. We'll be through before 12:00 because we eat 12:00. We do this every year, twice a year. It says Rock Creek Park Cleanup, but it's all over the city. We meet here, we get groups of people, we divvy up, we have some people that go around the square just picking it up. We usually go two or three blocks off the square. We send a couple of people out to the industrial park, and then the county does their thing too, and we all meet together at Rock Creek Park, and they provide a lunch for anybody that participates. And a couple of T-shirts say, "Nobody Trashes Tennessee." So just keep that in mind.
Do we need to bring our own bags and...
We got everything.
Everything.
Yes, ma'am.
Bags, mess?
Yeah, we got it all. Easy reaches. Any kids that needs some community service hours, or some of the kids that's on the Tennessee Promise Scholarship, school system has bought a few of them each year, and they kind of watch over them. We don't take responsibility for them, but it works out. It makes a difference. So appreciate you. Spread the word. Our last significant paving job, we paved the entire Fifth Avenue. And there were some questions about why would you pave Fifth Avenue? Because we do have a lot of other things that need paving too. But if you think about it, Fifth Avenue is the quickest way to get from one side of town to the other. There's a lot of traffic on Fifth Avenue. And to stand by that, I know Chief Braden has had his little speed trailer down there for a while. And it doesn't just record speeds, it counts the number of vehicles that go by. So just to show you...
Well, I think he stopped Mrs. Bingham one time.
Hey, nobody gets preferential treatment in Lewisburg. You do the crime, you do the time. But from January 29th of 2025 to March 5th of 2025, total number of vehicles that passed by there were 49,072. That's on one stretch of road. Sure is. I thought that was pretty interesting. See what else we got?
April 24th about the day opening. Traffic shouldn't be...
Yeah, we'll get that last. Let me get this one. This is one I got to study on. Housing developments. Everybody knows we got three major developments going on right now. King's Landing, Saddle Trace, and Savannah Lakes, all D.R. Horton projects. So I like to try to get updated on the number of homes that have been sold and what's going on with them every other month or so. I'll start with King's Landing. Supposed to be 111 total units. They have already built 53 of those. Of those 53, 50 are already sold. So you got three left in that first pod or age units is what they call them. And soon as they sell those three, they've already got another building ready to go. Each building has six, seven units, one or two of them may have eight. But they've already got another building ready to go. So they're close to halfway home on those projects. That's King's Landing. Let's see what we got next. Next, we have Savannah Lakes. That's the one by Oak Grove. We have, they have sold one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and they have two under contract. And they try to stay three or four ahead of the sales. They don't build too many. So they've sold seven, and they have two under contract. And I asked them, where are these people buying them from? I talked to one lady, and there's like five, six, seven people on the sales team. This lady's name was Kim, and she said she started selling less than 100 days ago, and she's already sold 17 units. And she said of those 17 she sold, now they're at all three different places, I didn't get the breakdown of it, but of the 17 she sold, two were Lewisburg residents, three were investors, and four were moving in from out of town. And a lot of out of towners are coming from Franklin, Columbia, Spring Hill. But I thought it was interesting, they've sold one to somebody from Utah, one to somebody from New Jersey, and two that are under contract are from families in Texas. And what's happening, the majority of them have family down this way, Franklin, Columbia, Spring Hill, and the grandparents are moving to get closer to the grandkids, Alan. That's what's happening with the Utah and the New Jersey and all that. I thought that was pretty interesting. Saddle Trace, Saddle Trace has sold... They have sold 10. And this is the single-family homes. They've sold 10 of those, and they build about five or six ahead because they usually got some under contract while they actually got some sales going. They have finished their walking trail. They had to do a little patchwork on it because of all the rain we've had, but it's ready. And Savannah Lakes says by next year, they'll have their swimming pool and playground area ready because they're going to have a swimming pool. As far as the townhomes at Saddle Trace, they've sold, let's see, six, 10, 12. They've sold 12, and they got two more that are under contract that should be gone by the end of this week. And they have their playground already in place, they have their mailbox kiosks up, so things are moving along pretty good.
What about the Finley Beach?
Still doing groundwork and prep work. They've still got some stuff to do with the water lines and piping and all that, so it'll be a minute. We were out there with them, and they projected that it would probably be late fall, just before winter, before they maybe had a couple of sites ready.
Yeah, it still looked rough out there last time I was through there.
What's the total, what's Savannah Lake, total units?
Already sold or totals?
Savannah's total bill.
I don't know. I have to go back and look at my sheet.
You don't know Saddle Trace?
Uh-uh. There are significant amounts. I just know King's Landing is 111. That's pretty difficult to remember. I'll let you know. I got a sheet with all the numbers on there. And a lot of times, sometimes they let you know it could be some fluctuation, one or two units once they start building, and if they run into some issues with the groundwork or whatever. But open space is always good. I think that's all I got.
Traffic signal.
And well, yes, the mayor wants us to know that the 24th...
11 o'clock.
...of this month, we will open bids for that notorious traffic signal that's been in the works on Ellington and Mooreville Highway for, I don't know how many years...
I was a young man when that started.
Any questions for Bam? Thank you, Bam.
Thank you.
Our Director of Economic and Community Development, Jennifer Pearson, would you come forward and give us a report?
All right. Thanks, y'all. Let's see, so in this past month, recently I had the opportunity to visit with the new HR Director at Mintz. His name's Michael Vernon. He's been there, I think, a month. He doesn't have new business cards yet. He came from Multimatic, I believe. We talked a little bit about the business, and he says it's going really well there. There are a couple of new things they're considering, but they're not a done deal yet, and he's going to let me know how that's progressing. They also have a new plant manager there, his name's Scott Kinnear. We, the, some of the leadership from China was in a couple of weeks ago, and we had a meeting set with them, but I think due to the earthquake, they were very delayed in their arrival to Lewisburg. So that was, that didn't happen. They did come, they did have a nice conversation with the folks at Mintz, so that actually did happen. They were here. But like I said, they got here too late for us to visit with them. It seems to be the season of RFI's coming out about industries, people wanting new places to locate their industries or expand their industries. In the last few weeks, I've responded to five of them. As you all know, there are lots of different reasons we can't respond to many of these due to our water restrictions, lack of building and lands to fit the specs. But, you know, five I think is good, probably five out of about eight or nine that we've been able to respond to. The ReWorld Company is continuing to move forward with the old Tricen Building. There is nothing signed yet, let me reiterate that. And they're doing, right now they're doing their due diligence with TDEC to see what sort of permits they have to have. They are recycling, but they're not a landfill, but TDEC is working with them on that. Just a quick, on the Industrial Development Board, they're looking to amend their bylaws to allow for members outside of Lewisburg within Marshall County, that'll give a wider pool from which to choose. And Mr. Hutto and I are looking into that and we're going to get back to them, or really, it's Mr. Hutto doing it. Get back to them as soon as we have an answer as to how that's going to work. Just a couple of other things, I'll be attending the TVA Economic Development Conference this Thursday and Friday. Last month, I attended the TVA Valley Workforce Summit up in Nashville, learned a lot of things about what other communities in the valley are doing to enhance their workforce, including some really cute things in Alabama with little kids, teaching them how to run a business, which has been hugely well received there. One more thing, and Carrie will talk to you about this, but I just wanted to give her some kudos for her community conversation she held last week on Jones Park. It was very well attended and I think it was a good conversation. I'm sorry, Harmon Park, thanks Carrie. So she'll tell you more about that, but I just wanted to let y'all know what a good job she did. So I got, any questions?
Uh, have you had any prospects in the last month, physical?
Not, not physical in the last month, there have been some in the last few months, but I think I've told you all about those. So it's, it's RFI's right now.
And where do they mostly come from, the state, TVA?
They come from the state, mhm.
Self-generated?
They're generated by the project that wants the land, I'm not sure what you're asking me.
How many companies, how many inquiries will get through the state? Greg used to give us a report, so that's why I'm not...
I can do that, I didn't realize you wanted it. There, all of the ones...
If you give us a report every month, that'd be great. I like to track where, where the inquiries are coming from, is it state? Is it commercial real estate developers? Is it the city of Lewisburg, is it TVA?
Okay.
Where the interests are coming from.
I can tell you, all of the ones recently are through the state, they've come through the state.
If we can get a written report like Greg does, it'd be very beneficial to me.
Sure. Anything else?
Further questions?
All right, thanks y'all.
Thank you. Drew?
Oh, wait, sorry, I'm sorry Drew, thanks Tracy, Tracy reminded me, there is a new coffee shop coming to Lewisburg out by Zaxby's, it's called Scooter's Coffee. And they're doing their groundbreaking next Monday, the fourteenth. And when I know when they're doing that, I will let y'all know in case you want to come to the groundbreaking. Thank you Tracy. Anything else I forgot, anyone? Okay.
Drew?
So the numbers for the fire department for the month of March, sixty inspections were completed. We issued two sprinkler construction permits. Total calls was a hundred and thirty-three with thirty-six fire-related, ninety-seven medical. And personnel logged one thousand eighty-six hours of training for the month of March. I don't have much of an update on anything else, I can say I spoke with the manufacturers of our engine on the nineteenth. He did reassure me that the truck is on schedule and to be ready for pickup next month. So our new engine should be back here by the end of next month. Squad truck is still going through the vinyl wrap process, but hopefully we're on the right track and we're almost there. That's all I've got, unless there's questions.
Questions for...
Thank you.
Thank you. Kent, are you here?
Let's see, all I got for you tonight is our apron project still in work. This Thursday, we'll be having bid openings. And we'll find out what the results are then and, and what we're looking at, so that's all I got.
Questions for Kent? Thank you very much. Carrie?
Just a few things, I had sent, or Gina printed off the newsletter for you all and some other takeaways that, from some meetings. The Rec Advisory Board held its first workshop on March eighteenth. The strengths and challenges and opportunities were identified across the board with all the parks there. On March twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, we distributed over four hundred trees through the Tennessee Environmental Council. Revenues consistently remain up from this time last year, still at that forty-five to fifty thousand dollar mark. Thank you for approving the grants, y'all are familiar with those. We did hold a community meeting at Greater First Baptist Church on April third. And thank you Jennifer for your assistance with that to discuss needs, wants, and things of that nature. You should have that report in your package as well. It's just a small takeaway on, on what was important, I think mainly was playgrounds, a water feature, and some benches were the big items that, that were highlighted. We have finished our first round of lifeguard training. We had eleven guards who passed the test this past Sunday. We've got another one that's coming up, April twenty-sixth through May fourth. Our rec board will be on April fifteenth at five PM. That will probably be in the large meeting room instead of the small meeting room this go-around. We do have someone who's renting that room right now. And then also just some numbers, I wanted to let you guys know, maximum velocity, they have currently two hundred soccer players in their league, a hundred and forty-five flag football players, these are all youth. And they've already gotten sixty registered for our, their fall football league. So just wanted to throw those numbers out there. And that's about it.
Questions for Carrie?
An update on your de, I'm sorry, an update on your dehumidifier? So the exhaust fans have been ordered and they should be shipping in the middle of May, coming in, I got that report today. And then the dehumidifier is in the manufacturing stage and there's a ship date of August for that, so.
Who else was going to say something?
On the meeting in Harmon Park.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned that you probably would more likely be interested in keeping the property that we were talking about selling. So that's something that we need to consider.
Yes, and we'll be, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry.
Okay.
We'll be bringing that before the rec board. And, and one of the things that, that was talked about at the meeting was, was that piece of property. The folks there were wanting to keep it as well, they, they showed a big interest in that. And so, looking forward, I feel like that maybe with our growth that we have, the different neighborhoods coming in, it may be something important that we keep.
Further questions? Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Chief Braden?
Thank you Mayor, Council. Again, the numbers for the month of March, they seem to be running pretty consistent with where we've been at throughout the year. One thousand one hundred and eighteen service calls for the month, month of March and forty new cases that were assigned out to investigations. Just to put into context, a little bit of that number, which I normally don't give this out, but as far as traffic enforcement with where we've been at, out of that, two hundred and nineteen were traffic stops that were performed in the month of March as well. So that's all I've got, Mayor, unless you have any questions for me.
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Alan? I think I've asked you this before Alan, what did I, when I was calling you to offer you the position? Do you remember what I called you, it wasn't Alan?
No, I believe it was Dave, if I remember.
Okay Dave.
I've been called so many things that I'm like, it doesn't matter, but thank you. Good evening Mayor, members of the council. Just a couple of items to update you all on, right now we're in the midst of final stages of putting together a budget. And we'll be presenting a budget, a draft budget to the Budget Committee next week. One good bits of information regarding next year's budget, we did get the preliminary numbers from the tax assessor. And the total real and personal property for the coming year is up about twenty point eight million or five point four percent. So that just about recovers the drop that we had from, we experienced in the current year over the previous year. So, that's a bit of good information. As far as major revenues, we've collected through last week, five million, one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars or ninety-seven point six percent of our current year budget, which is five million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That compares pretty favorably as far as percentages to the prior year where we collected ninety-eight percent. But last, the prior year, we had five point five million that was budgeted and we had collected about five point four million at this time, excuse me, in the previous year. That's really all that I have, if anybody has any questions.
Sales tax, how are they doing, how is it doing?
They're trending pretty right on target with budget, both local sales tax, or we have budgeted about two point seven million, I think, this year, and they're trending right on target, as is the state sales tax, which the budget is about one point four to one point five million if I recall. So both of those are, are trending on target with budget.
I think you said that, that this year they didn't audit or the personal property and cut us by a bunch?
Yeah, that, that's the adjustment that hurt us in a year ago and so in the current fiscal year. But they are not doing that, that, that ratio adjustment this, for the next fiscal year, that's correct.
Additional questions for Alan? Thank you Alan.
You're welcome.
Public Works. Brandon? Who else? Oh, yes. We, we don't want to rush.
The only thing I have for y'all tonight is just to let you know, Monday, we did start our seasonals. I believe we're right on track with those as far as everybody coming in. We have started mowing the cemetery at Lone Oaks, so hopefully by the end of the week, that will be caught up. And that's all I have, if y'all have any questions for me.
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
So let's rush to Chris.
He told me. Thank you Mayor. I just want to cover some of the permits we issued during the march. We had fifteen land disservice permits, two accessory structure permits, two demo permits, four, four sign permits, and we had fourteen code violations, two cases has been closed and twelve are still pending. That's all I have for you, you having questions?
Questions for Chris? Don't rush, you rushed right through it. Thank you very much. Thomas, do you have anything to report?
The bill you asked about last month, increase the minimum insurance that a city has to carry, so far has stalled. I believe it was up for a hearing maybe last week, but that got deferred and I'm not sure when the next one is. So it has not gone any traction on that, I was, I know, there's a couple of other things, but...
That's good news for us, is it not?
It is, because the fiscal note on that one was, makes sense, and they were pretty much all, all before and I think by cities and counties and other municipalities. But there's not too much else out there that has proceeded very far and they're almost done for the year, so.
Okay, questions for Mr. Hutto? Have I forgotten anyone?
Carrie's, Carrie's got something else, right?
Oh, but I didn't forget her.
No, 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 no.
I know.
No, I forgot, we are actually having some surveys filled out, we're sending a map, this is a QR code that I'm going to pass around. If you guys would please send the survey for Parks and Recreation, just so that for grant purposes and for programming purposes, just wanted to give those to you.
Thank you, I believe Councilman Burns wants to...
Yeah, I actually got two things, Mayor, real, real quick. Thank you to Councilman Crutcher for referring this back over to my ward. And we may want to bring it in the, whoops, the May work session. But Eighth Avenue South, which will be up the hill from the bowling alley. You go up that street and the first street that crosses is Cedar. And right now, east and west, there's a stop sign there. But we had someone to reach out and the kids can't cross the street. I think they wanted to slow the traffic down, so what I'd like to do in, in May, if we're putting on the work surges, is look at, looking at making that a four-way stop. And see how the council feels about it. And it'll give everybody time to look at it and, and we can get a map of it and things like that. And then the last thing that got Mayor, thank you. Rick Williams, a contact for Andy, Representative Andy Ogles office in Washington, they're trying to regenerate the Columbia Dam again. And he sent me an email today with a, a little mock resolution. All of you should have it, but it was, I, I got it to you as soon as, soon as he gave it to me. But we may want to put that on the work session for, uh, May also. What it's about is, just in general, it's kind of like a fill-in-the-blank resolution that, that the body would, would say, you know, we recommend the Columbia Dam or something like that, basically to support their efforts in another community. So if we could, if we put those two things on the work session.
Anybody else have anything? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Councilwoman Thomas makes that motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilman Robertson seconds the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, motion carries, we stand adjourned. And remember, we will assemble on the, at the wall.